Good morning. It's Tuesday, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Independence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right. Any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Okay. Want to go ahead a minute? Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm out of order.
I will. It's your show.
Okay.
I will move to approve the March 12 minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes.
Hambley. Yes. Now, okay, any public want to talk about resolutions? Jumping ahead. Well, we do have a proclamation presentation scheduled for Medina County Business and Industry Day. We're proclaiming Wednesday, March 20th, as Medina County Business Industry Day, whereas the Board of Medina County Commissioners desire to acknowledge the investments and contributions made by local manufacturers to the economy of Medina County and to show our dedication to maintaining a friendly business climate. And whereas Medina County is home to nearly 400 manufacturing companies who employ over 9,000 workers making products that are sold throughout the world. And whereas we seek to highlight the strong local businesses in Medina County and their contributions to our local economy. And whereas manufacturing is and has historically been a cornerstone to strong economies in Medina County and throughout Ohio, and we commend and support this important industry. And whereas this industry will be highlighted during Business and Industry Day in cooperation with Leadership Medina County through facility tours and educational events to raise awareness and educate residents, students, and businesses as to the economic importance and career opportunities afforded by businesses in Medina County. And I think it's a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion, comments? Okay, roll call.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes. And Will, if you want to step forward. I understand we have somebody from Leadership Medina County here as well.
On behalf of the Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank the Commissioners for this resolution. Manufacturing is the lifeblood of every community, right along with especially agriculture. We can't forget that in this county. As an educator, we support both sides of that economic wheel that moves this community forward, and thank you for recognizing that.
On behalf of Leadership Medina County and the Signature Class of 2024, we also would like to thank the Commissioners for recognizing this, as we will be spending our day exploring the business and industry in Medina County tomorrow.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have department resolutions, County Engineers' Office, and...
Morning.
Good morning.
We've got two resolutions for consideration. The first is accepting and awarding the replacement of Bridge Number One on Metzger Road in Liverpool Township. And the second is the necessity to close various county roads for a call for replacement.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
You too. All right. Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order one for the Ledge and Westfield Generator Project. And the second is authorizing change order number one for the Fenn and Marx Road Water Main Replacement Project.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Lee, Human Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for you today, approving personnel changes. We have four new hires, one in sanitary, two in the office for older adults, one at JFS, 18 rate increases, four in sanitary, one at solid waste, four at the office for older adults, two at the county home, and seven at JFS, one fund correction and the Commissioners, one leave of absence in sanitary, one return from leave at JFS, and one probationary removal in line and maintenance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Chris Jacob, County Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm also presenting Finance Department's resolutions for the morning, if that's okay.
Sure. Proceed.
First resolution this morning for Finance, amends the annual appropriation resolution by increasing appropriation levels for multiple funds. Next resolution, amends the appropriation resolution, this time by transferring appropriations between line items for various departments. Next resolution, performs expenditure adjustments for the Black Grant Fund and our loss control operation. Next resolution, authorizes the acceptance of an Ohio EPA recycle, Ohio Source Reduction Grant Agreement with the Ohio EPA and our solid waste district. This is for a grant for the amount of $10,000 and will be used specifically for water bottle refilling stations at the solid waste location and the county home. Next resolution, amends the agreement for intake and referral services, coordinator services between Medina County Family First and the Catholic Charities of Medina County. This is an existing contract and amends by increasing the contract amount by $4,300. Next resolution, also for Family First, authorizes the submission of a grant application for a operational capacity building program. The amount of the application is $30,750 and is for the grant period beginning July 1st of this year. Next resolution allows expenses of the county engineer. This is for the Stormwater Division. And next resolution allows expenses of multiple other county officials for various meeting attendance. Final resolution for the Finance Department allows claims and authorizes issuance for the weekly bills. This week's total, $1,553,012.45. Next resolution, authorizes a change order for the Medina County Veteran Services Building Addition and Renovation Project. This is an increase in the amount of the contract from $1,375,000 to $1,421,377,38. That change is directly related to the additional site work that was required at the location of the project. Next resolution approves the filing of a temporary permit application to allow for sale of beer during the Medina Beer Fest at the county fairgrounds. And final resolution for me this morning, authorizes a request for proposal process for health benefit consulting services. We have an existing contract that expires for this purpose at the end of May. We're just trying to go out and see in the market what other consulting firms have to offer, and we'll evaluate those proposals and make recommendations to you for the period beginning June 1st, if that's acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I have this morning.
Move to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
All right. Just a quick discussion point. I'm sorry. I had, I think it was Greg was here last week, but the water filling stations, I think that was a solid waste grant that Deb Walton saw the need, that she couldn't use all of it and brought the county home into that. So I just wanted to call attention to that because I think that's a great use of collaboration between departments and things we see all the time but don't always highlight, so.
Thanks for mentioning that. A roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Department Updates. Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
February was a pretty uneventful month for us. Overall, construction value was down quite a bit, 50% from a year ago, but because of the Wadsworth Middle School that came in in January, we're still 70% over year-to-date. Value of new homes edged up a little bit to $369,000. And the new home starts of 22 is a little bit below average, average being closer to 24 or 25, but still pretty good. Moving on to the second page, monthly receipts, down 24%. Third page, year-to-date receipts, up almost 3% from a year ago. And page four, all the permits by township, residential permits, that is. And page five, commercial permits issued by township. And last page, you know, some commercial permits and their details and their value. But again, mostly pretty uneventful. Our only issue is we do so much with our email. You know, we send all our approvals via email, we send the pay thing via email, and a bunch of them are going into people's spam and junk box. So sadly, a week, two weeks can pass and they don't realize we've communicated to them, and it's been kind of a real issue here recently, but it seems to have gotten a little better. But that hadn't been the problem in previous years. I mean, it would occasionally be an issue, but it's been a pretty big thing these last couple of weeks, and it's unfortunate. You know, we have to backtrack and show that we sent them something, and of course, that doesn't make it good, but it's, you know, it's unfortunate.
Do you end up getting a bounce-back message?
No, because it's often going in their spam.
Oh, I see, and they wouldn't know.
So it doesn't notify us. But we do so much, it's all email. It's all email. And that's unfortunate, but it has gotten a little better. Keith found an article that kind of discusses how and why it happens, and so we've tried to take some steps to, you know, help make it better. But it's unfortunate. But other than that, we're doing quite fine. Review times are still good, about three weeks in commercial and two, three days in residential. Yeah.
Do you still have vacancies on your review board?
Yes.
What, who are you looking for? Occasionally, I think it's good to always mention.
An architect, registered architect, to be on the appeals board. Yes. Yes.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks very much, Richard.
Thank you.
Ben Now, acting EMA Director.
So I'd like to start with the 2023 Annual Report. This was approved at the last EMA Executive Committee meeting. It's also available on our website if anybody wants to look at it, so I'll just hit a few of the highlights. I know you guys have seen different versions of it already. The grants that we received last year are listed on page six, so you can see there was nine different grants. Like typical for EMA, most of the projects that we complete are all grant-funded. So this includes a few high-dollar item grants, the state capital grant for the building project, the Hillier Foundation gave us $100,000 for the dive team, the hazardous materials emergency planning grant, and that provides all the hazmat training for the hazmat team and the fire departments. And the Emergency Management Performance Grant is the main operating grant that EMA uses for kind of our day-to-day activities. You'll see on page seven, the annual LPC exercise, so this is an annual exercise that EMA does that's county-wide every year. So this past year was a large communications exercise. We worked with the Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency to put on a large interoperability communications exercise, included about 80 participants, 30 different agencies from Medina County and some of our surrounding counties. This is all about communications and how we can interoperate together. And then you'll see the list of the incidents, how we ended the year on page 16. So you see, like normal, it's mostly fire investigations. That's by far the most popular team that goes out, and a handful of hazmat, a structural collapse in there. Really nothing too significant last year, so we ended it with 44 incidents total for the year. So then, moving on to this year's report, so this is all year-to-date as of yesterday. You see the same three grants listed, so the grants don't follow the normal calendar year, their grant period, so these three are grants that are carried over from last year, not new ones that we received already this year. The current project, so obviously, the big ongoing project is the building construction. I give you a picture of what that currently looks like. So that's been on track so far. They poured the footers end of last week. That's moving along. The solar eclipse coordination planning is still ongoing. As you know, the impact of the eclipse is far less than what was, you know, initially, you know, said, so I don't know if you saw the latest modeling that ODOT came out with about two weeks ago. Really doesn't show any impacts for Medina County traffic-wise. 71 was at 60% capacity at 4:00 p.m., which is kind of the peak time for traffic, so we're really not expecting any traffic impacts other than maybe, you know, right around the square, it showed a little bit, but that's kind of a normal, everyday occurrence anyways. The radio tower project, that's a Homeland Security grant-funded project. We've been working with the Sheriff's Department on putting up a radio tower down in Seville area, so this will be used for both the Medina County radio system and the Harris radio Based raw treatment plant confined space training, we're working with Liverpool Plant to put on a confined space training with their open confined space team. School bus training is, that's going to be June 11th. We're working with the ESC to put on an advanced school bus training for Medina County and then some of the surrounding counties. So that's mainly with the fire departments, but they have access to a couple of school buses, one that we're going to be able to flip over and actually do some extrication training and stuff. So it's kind of a unique experience to be able to actually destroy a bus, essentially. So we'll be providing training to the school bus drivers on, you know, how to escape a bus during a fire, how to go, you know, through the hatches, that type of stuff, and then firefighters will also do a demonstration at the end and actually cut off the bus. There's a hazmat technician training that's started last weekend, so that's going to double the size of the hazmat team, so pretty excited about that. And then we've been busy this year with hazmat calls. We had one, a large one at Bleach Tech, a large hydrochloric acid release, a large diesel fuel release at Spray Products Medina, and then another semi-released fuel in a creek in Seville. So we've been doing cost recoveries for all three of those. Under Ohio law, we're allowed to recoup the costs of any hazardous materials released in response to that. And then we're working on a compliance action for one that wasn't reported. Active shooter response training, we just, there's a committee that's working on this that's not just EMA, but nine tabletop exercises were just completed around the county with police and fire departments. So some takeaways from that, and we'll move forward into more towards a full-scale exercise later this year. And a homeschool safety day is, that's going to be May 21st for homeschool kids. That's in conjunction with the Fire Chiefs Association and the State Fire Marshal. It's not just going to be fire safety, though, it's all things safety for homeschool kids that don't get that, you know, that education during the normal school day. So that's going to be down at Buffalo Creek. They're expecting a few hundred kids to attend that day. And the last page just has incidents for the year. Like I said, fairly busy, 13 incidents so far this year. Those three hazmat and fire investigation, one structural collapse so far this year. And then EMA does have some upcoming trainings listed on the last page that people are going to sign up for. Any questions?
Has the annual report been circulated at townships?
Yeah, it was sent out to the advisory group email list, and it's on the website.
Good. Good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Reviewing for February this year, we continue to see strong numbers in our ridership. Medina's rise in ridership has mainly been from what we're seeing is the trips to work, specifically in Medina. It's really catching on, taking people to the businesses on Lake, so, but also Wadsworth and Brunswick numbers remain strong. Ridership is really showing what we can do capacity-wise. We're gaining capacity every day, I think, just because our efficiencies continuing to drive down revenue miles, actual miles. Our cost is really good to see, too. We're driving our cost per passenger down to, in the month of February, 3167 per passenger. So that just fuels savings and the amount of people on the bus, the shared ride service to drive down those numbers. So all positive there. On the monthly contract summary, office photo adults continues to be very high when the number of trips, which is great. We're really trying to make sure that we meet the needs of all the communities, but especially the seniors. Veteran services is up. What we're seeing is more and more people are hearing about the service and contacting us. Recently spoke to a group at the library, very interested in what transit was, what it could do for them, and I have a lot of follow-up emails and calls about that meeting. So all positive news when it comes to awareness, which we're trying to do. Our out-of-county transit services have kind of leveled off a little bit with Ace Taxi. I don't see that increasing too much. It's down a little bit, but they're definitely meeting that need. Couple, any questions on that? Couple other updates. I did get the formal letter that I was looking for, that we were looking for, to acknowledge that we're going to be, we are transitioning from a urban transit to a rural transit. I'm going to conference next Wednesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, to speak, to talk to other rurals and see how their funding flow is going and working with ODOT. I wanted a formal letter. And with that, we're working with the FTA to liquidate our funds. I don't know if the word liquidate, but exhaust our existing FTA funding we have with maybe larger exchange with Cleveland as we've done, and reaching out to them and their, I spoke to their legal counsel yesterday, they're interested in the draft, so we'll get that to them soon. That'll put us in good standing when it comes to our matching for our grants that we're going to have for the federal remaining money. So all good news right now. I think we're seeing, we're hiring drivers. We've hired two of the five we need. Buses are coming soon. Just waiting on the final dealership approval for those buses to come to us, so there will be eight. We're hiring a new office staff member. We've got those, HR is partnering with us as well to post. We've got a lot of applicants all of a sudden, which is good to see.
Good. Very good. So we do have clarity that the rural change isn't going to have a major negative impact on the relationship with RTA?
Well, what, if I could go into a little bit of the process, and Mr. Hambley might have more to add to this, and I welcome his experience in this, but since my, in the last five years, we did an annual exchange of urban allocation funding, which comes to us, then we share some back to eight, to Greater Cleveland RTA. We give them capital, they give us operating, it's a very clean that. We won't be getting those urban allocations any longer.
Right.
So we're going to exhaust our '22, '23 funding with them. It's going to come back to us and some funds, but next year, that will be a different conversation. We're going to have to, which I broached that a little bit, but we're going to have to be speaking. I'll welcome the input and the participation of the Commissioners to make sure that goes very well, but because we're out of that business.
Yeah.
It's going to change. The dynamic is going to change. It may not be any allocation exchange at all. It may be that we're strictly through ODOT, and they make us what they call, quote-unquote, "whole." I'm hoping.
Well, right now, the transition is certain, it's just how smoothly it goes is yet to be determined. And one part is obviously Greater Cleveland RTA.
Yep.
And how we can continue having a longstanding relationship, which we have. We were rural before.
Yep.
Now we're urban, we had a good relationship, and not going back, as if we can continue to do that, we'll have to see. But right now, it's really, the burden is on ODOT, their transit department, to help identify what the future sources of revenue look like. Would that be correct?
That is absolutely correct. The good news, we're in good standing for a couple of years.
Right.
We've set us up in a, ourselves in a financial position that we can let the chips fall where they may, and then we figure out how we get into it. But the exhausting of funds is something very new to FTA and ODOT. They're approving everything so far that we're doing, excluding the exchange. Verbally, I've got an email as well saying, "Exchange, exhaust these funds, we'll move forward with ODOT," but I'll be trapped again.
And that's a prerequisite to being in the rural world, or we're just doing that because it gives us a better position for the revenue share that we're...
It's part of the transition. It's just, it's a must.
It has to happen.
Commissioner Hambley is right. How we manage it, how smoothly all this goes, means that we all have a complete understanding, and getting, as you all know, agreement between the FDA, ODOT, and NOACA is...
It's not easy.
The trick. Let's call it the trick.
Yeah.
So that's doing pretty good so far for the month of March. I think the weather, although tomorrow's the first day of spring, but it doesn't feel like it.
Allegedly.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see. Commissioners, we do have Commissioners Hearing Date Notice for Regular Annexation Petition. Clerk of the Board of Commissioners received a petition for a regular annexation on March 12th for two parcels of land totaling 18.9780 acres of land from Roswell Hills Township to the city of Brunswick. A hearing regarding this petition will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 11:00 a.m., providing no objections are received between now and then. So that's the only business we have. Next open to public comment. Any comments? All right. Go ahead and proceed. Open up to discussion session. Chris, do you have anything for discussion?
I do. Thank you.
Jeremy's still there now. Matt, anything? All right. Richard, anything? Shannon?
Linda's here.
Linda? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Kind of working the...
I did have one thing. I will be presenting the...
Come on. Go ahead. We make sure that the audience hears it.
Just wanted to make sure we got the draft of the MOU with Cleveland in the hands of the Commissioners.
Okay.
Administrator has it as well. I just wanted to make, Administrator, but I wanted to make sure that we knew that we needed that to their board soon for, we don't need to sign anything, we need to send it to them that we've approved the draft.
Got it.
And the amounts and all that, so I'll work with...
Some of it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll be taking action. All right. Very good. Thanks.
I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words about Ray Jarrett. We had...
Oh, I was, yeah, I was kind of shocked. Ray Jarrett, who is a former Medina Township trustee, actually, he used to live in Brunswick City for a number of years, became friends with him back in late eight, and then he moved to Medina Township and known him for many years. Good guy, very solid community involvement. And even though, once he retired and no longer a Township trustee, he would still come down to the, go to the annual events for the Township Association. He still has a place over there in Medina Township, as well as a place in Florida there. So is as sad to hear as a sudden heart attack apparently on Friday. And wish, obviously, condolences to his family and his friends.
He was a really good public servant to the community. He really was.
Indeed was.
I also just wanted to remind everybody, it's Election Day, and for those who can get out and vote today, please do.
Aaron, you have some things?
I do. I have one item. I referenced it last week, and there should be a letter in your packet. This is a letter that I prepared that it's currently, it's addressed to Grace Galucci, the executive director of NOACA, but it, I think, I would suggest that we circulated among at least the other county boards of Commissioner Representatives on the NOACA Board, and I'm open to other suggestions if you think we should broaden that circle a little bit. But as I referenced in my comment last week, we are identified as the, part of the leadership group of the Climate Action Plan that they're undertaking. And in the letter, I go into greater detail of kind of some of the frustrations I've had personally, and I know I've shared with you, and I know the two of you share as well, related to the contributions we've attempted to make to that process that have too often fallen on deaf ears. Most recently, and I think perhaps the most egregious one, was the recent last-second inclusion of agriculture into the scope of the project, which came without the same amount of, I'll say, vetting and study and analysis that the other components of the plan had. And now agriculture is included in the plan that's been submitted. So between those examples and oftentimes of presenting up there our position and trying to represent the voices of some of the outlying communities in the room, we've struggled to have any traction there. As a result, the focus of the letter is requesting that the Medina County Commissioners be removed from their list of climate action plan leadership. It's absolutely symbolic. I mean, it's nothing more than that, but I just feel in good conscience, with our name on the list, we're lending assertive legitimacy and implied regional collaboration that, in my experience, wasn't part of the process. So that's why I want to send this letter off, and like I said, maybe copy the other county commissioner representatives on the board, just to let, you know, those folks know that we're requesting to remove our participation.
I thought it was an excellent letter, and my favorite line in the letter was, "As long as we remain members of NOACA." So I did like that that line was added because
I channeled you
Yes, thank you.
in saying that, so.
Well, I agree. I think you did a good job putting that together. I agree with the signing the letter. For me, the, what's important is, is letting our name be used has implied that they are actually an implication of regional collaboration that we have not seen. There are many of the decisions that were made, were made in the back room by other people, was not involving respective leadership from Medina County. So given that you weren't in the room when decisions were made, it's hard to say that you're actually going to claim that as, that we're one of the members. Other than at the very top, by code, as well as by law, we're required to be at the NOACA board. This is a subset of the NOACA board. This is a specific planning effort that literally, and I agree, I think that we've been largely ignored. Things have been, actions have been taken outside public view, outside public transparency, and I think outside public interest of those in Medina County. So I think this is an appropriate letter to send them and let them know, quit using our name and implying that we actually were a contributor to that planning effort and those decisions. Ultimately, we are on record as some of those actions went to the board, but that's fine. You vote one way, and there you go. But all the, what's happening in the back room, and in a sense, a bit of darkness, is not appropriate to identify us as being involved in that decision-making.
Yeah, and I agree wholeheartedly. There was this sense, at least among the board participation that I was a party to, and I think from some of the representatives that we've sent, and also people who participated in the public sessions, that there was, there were certain foregone conclusions to the plan. And so it was more about securing buy-in from decisions that had already been made, to your point, as opposed to an actual grassroots, what should the plan include? And that's the part, I think, that holds the most frustration for me. The other thing I think that kind of gave rise to the need for this happened at our last board meeting, where I believe it was a representative from Lorraine County had offered, or kind of revisited some of our discussion points from the previous meeting related to the inclusion of agriculture. And the representative from NOACA was quick to point out that the Ohio Farm Bureau is part of the plan leadership as well. And I know from discussions that I've had, their involvement has been limited, and it was limited, frankly, on the premise from the conversation that I had, it was limited on the basis that agriculture was not a focus of the plan. So I think to then put that in kind of at the 11th hour, and then say, well, Farm Bureau's been a part of this, I don't know, and I mean legitimately, I don't know if they have or haven't been, but my understanding earlier in the process was their involvement was kind of predicated on it not being focused on agriculture. So that's another conversation probably to be had, but that, I kind of saw how that lever of legitimacy can be applied to some of those discussions to kind of tamp down dissent. And so that's why I thought I wouldn't want that to be, you know, our name used in that capacity of saying, well, the Medina County Commissioners are plan leadership, when, as you pointed out, at every step of the way, we tried to make improvements that were, that kind of fell on deaf ears. So I appreciate your support with that. The distribution to the other county commissioners, does that make sense?
I think it's warranted.
Okay.
Sure, it does. It does. I can attest that when I attended the regional conference, I know you weren't able to be there, and they literally had a one forum where speakers were part of this leadership that were, I'm unaware of, Kiowa County or Cleveland-centered groups, literally making fun of some of our residents in Medina County that had appeared and testified. And I thought that was inappropriate. If anything, it's a disrespect for people having different viewpoints on an issue that is controversial and what actions, although I will point out that many of the actions that climate action plans are elsewhere, we already are doing. We're doing farmers' markets. We're actually, we're doing a whole lot more when it comes to water quality issues. We're doing, we're expanding our parkland holdings. We're doing many of the items already, that they actually, then discount those individuals that are, that have concerns with a, quote, "regional" approach, a five-county mandated from the top-down kind of approach, I think is just, is just wrong. And I'm glad that we're making, I certainly identifying very clearly, we'll take responsibility, we'll take credit for what we do, we'll take responsibility and credit for what we, our votes at the NOACA board, but certainly, we're not going to take ownership of something that we literally were not involved with. So with that, I certainly agree with you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I had
Okay. I did want to bring up the, during the eclipse on April 8th, the solid waste policy, or, excuse me, the solid waste facility for the residential campus will be closed that day, but the commercial haulers will be able to, and Barb Walton, our director, has communicated with the cities, let them know they can still haul the trash. They're actually going to open up early, they're going to operate from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Therefore, by the time they get finished, traffic, hopefully, if there is any impact on traffic, the Medina County Residential Recycling and also our recycling facility won't add to the traffic issues that might occur. I understand some of the nearby campgrounds are already entirely filled up for that day. So indeed, if there is that lot of traffic and a lot of people leaving, certainly, we won't be adding to it, and our solid waste facility will be available only for the commercial haulers in the morning, but they can come, they can come, if you have a residential, come in on Tuesday or any other prior, other following days. So with that, I know we're getting the notice on Facebook and websites and so forth, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Other than that, I've got nothing else.
The fair booth.
Oh, oh, yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Well, we need to talk about the fair booth. This is kind of an annual discussion. We need to go ahead and verify that the commissioners will have a booth like we had the last several years, and get the approval and see if you have any concerns with the going ahead and continuing the practice of commissioners having a booth at the fair booth, and then, of course, asking for our volunteers of our department heads, as in addition to us staffing it. And it goes from July 29th to August 4th.
Yes.
I think it's a great idea.
All right, please. Super. And I know Brian does a great job, Brian Gatlin, does a great job putting the booth together, and I know when hours get to spend there, do meet up with a lot of people, so I haven't seen for a while. All right. And with that approval, we'll move forward. Is there anything else for the good old order? All right.
Move to, I guess we're moving to adjourn. We have a special meeting, so we're moving, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Yes, as Aaron was saying, there is a special commissioners' meeting this afternoon at 12:00 p.m., 12:00 p.m. to discuss matters of the board revision, but that's a separate meeting, so. With that, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.